All right. This is our, it's four o'clock. This is our school board meeting. If we could stand with the plate and the chair.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's pride. Gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, we bear an worthy head before you once again this day. Father, thank you for this time. Thank you for this day, God. Thank you for health and strength, Father. Thank you for our school, our school system, Lord, for all of our teachers and faculty and administrators, God. Thank you for our students, God, and all our families, Lord. And we ask you, God, to lead, guide, and direct us in the decisions we need to make, Father, that be the right decisions, God, to help our students and help our staff and our community. We love you and we thank you in your name we pray.
Four oh one, officially called the meeting to order. First item on the agenda, I guess, is the introduction of new staff.
Well, it looks like all of our staff are, oh, they're afraid to come in. This is Taylor Jamison, and there are 21 others that we will endeavor to get here next time. But I think that on this first day of official workdays, when they have to be there, they may be a little bit overwhelmed with work. Okay? So Taylor, why don't you step up to the microphone for just a second? And tell us, well, you know, you come from good stock. I mean, your dad's preacher and your mom's a teacher, and so you ought to be able to talk.
I'm not a kid.
There you go. Well, we're just a bunch of overgrown kids. Tell us about yourself.
My name's Taylor Jamison. I grew up in Silva. I went to middle school in Swain County. It's home school there in high school. And I've been an assistant at East Elementary for two years. So I decided to take that next step into my journey, and I'm ready to get started and make some connections.
Taylor comes to us with the reputation of being able to totally connect with students, and we're excited to have him because, like I said, he comes from really good stock, and that matters. You know his dad, Steve?
Good man.
Yeah. And his mother, Stephanie, who worked with us for a lot of years.
My sister's Kim.
Oh, yeah.
Kim.
Kim, that's right. His sister Stephanie, and she works with us at East as well. So it's a family of teachers and preachers. Well, we're thrilled to have you, Taylor. Thank you for spending some time with us, and you're free to stay for the whole meeting, or you can go do whatever you need to do.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
We have them. With no additions, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, bow your hands. Approve the agenda. Approval of the consent agenda, personnel and managers, are there any changes or request changes for the consent agenda?
No, sir. No changes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, bow your hands. Motion passes. So do we have any public comment? From nobody out in the audience? Perfect. Is there any need to go into closed session? Any need for a motion to go into closed session? Without that, that moves us to item three, discussion A, personnel.
Unless we have a discussion that needs to happen in closed session, I think that that is there as a placeholder.
Okay. Superintendent's report.
The last time that we were together, I brought to you a draft that had to do with data regarding test scores and our approach to that, and I promised you that I would come back this time with a second piece to that, and it will be more of, this is what we're going to do. We've given to you a handout of the Swain County School System goals that are based from the district level. You will see that there are proficiency numbers. Those numbers are based on data that does not include the last school year. We anticipate the data from '24-'25 to be available to us at the end of August. So all of the projections you see come from before. Now, if you will look at the fourth slide in the lower right-hand column, you will see where it says academic targets and it says district goals, east goals. All of that information is included after this page in a hard copy for you. Now, I need to ask you to not share that because within that are our projections for the '24-'25 test scores, but we can't share that because it's not released by DPI. Those are our projections at this point. Based on all that, you'll go to the very last color page. You will see our conclusion. And we started to address this the last time that I was here to speak to you. We have determined, along with some consultants from other places, that because of stagnation of our assessments at a particular level, that we don't have an intervention problem, we have a core problem in the classroom. And what that means is all of the students that are in the classroom are not receiving and retaining all of the information that we want for them to have. They're not completing the skill sets that we need for them to have. And so we are going to address that as a classroom initiative rather than an intervention initiative for small groups and for students. Okay? All right. So the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to implement a system-wide coaching initiative. Our principals, our TLCs, are going to receive some extensive training and coaching over the next year, as are our teachers, we hope, so that they will be able to coach each other. There is a plan, a project that's coming out of Raleigh called the Advanced Teaching Roles that we are applying for, and that will provide training for teachers who want to be able to either work from within the classroom or step out of the classroom some and be responsible for leading a team of teachers in training themselves. So we would take our best or our most experienced, or whatever words that you want for that, usually it's the most experienced, and then they would be charged with helping those who have less experience become better instructors in the classroom. And they would receive additional support for that financially. I know Casey has expressed a desire for us to be able to pay teaching staff an additional amount if they bring exceptional skills. This is a way to do that, and it comes from state budget coffers and not from our local funds. That's one of the nice things. At particular levels in this, they can earn anywhere from $3,000 to $10,000 for participating in it. I think that's a wonderful opportunity for our teaching staff to step up and become teacher leaders and help us grow our abilities. So that's all part of our coaching initiative for instruction. The next piece is we're going to maximize explicit instruction in the classroom. Now, the last two pages of your handout, there's a document that we've put together that identifies the five or six core pieces of explicit instruction. RL, I'm sure that as you look at that as a former teacher, what your mind and what your heart is probably going to say is, well, that's just good teaching practice. And it is just good teaching practice. But we have to recognize that there is a percentage of the instructional staff coming to us that are not classically trained and have very limited classroom experience. And so this gives us the opportunity to say, these are the things that we need to see, and this is where we can help you in explicit instruction growth. I've charged our principals and our TLCs with walkthroughs, and they're going to see the areas where we are strong in explicit instruction and where we need some support, and then we'll find that support for our teachers so that we can improve instruction in the classroom. You have to know what's expected in order to deliver that every single time. And I don't want to say in any way or imply that our staff is not delivering explicit instruction. I believe that they are. But we have to recognize, and I said this to staff members today in their staff meetings, we have to recognize that we are at this level in our instruction and in the student success in the classroom, and we're bringing our A-game every day. If we're bringing our A-game every day, but we need our students to be here, then that means we need to help our A-game be better. Does that make sense? You know? Say, use a sports metaphor. If somebody wants me to be good in basketball, they're going to have to help me be good in basketball because I'll bring my skill set to the court every day. And I'll bring my best, but it may not help us win games yet. So that's what the explicit instruction and coaching allows us to do. And obviously, we are very concerned with literacy in the classroom, and we will continue to provide additional literacy instruction for our staff, literacy opportunities to grow, and also to help those who are doing walkthroughs understand what they're looking for every single time. So overall, what you'll see in that first strategic goal is we want to help our staff grow. We want to coach them up, and that's the district's responsibility, so that's where we're going to go. That will improve core instruction by itself. All right? The next thing that I'm very interested in, and we're very interested in, is you can't help a student grow if the student's not at school. And to say that we have an attendance problem is probably an overstatement a little bit, but we do have too many students that aren't coming to school on a regular basis. And so I have asked our finance officer to set aside a budget amount for us to create positive attendance incentives at the schools. And today in those faculty meetings, I said to our social workers and our counselors, and this is yours to design. You decide what you want to do with this money so that we can help our students be at school on a more regular basis. Now, there's another piece of that that as a district that we have to address, and in our, RL, I think that you were there at this point in our district meeting over in Colowee, but one of the things that as a school system we need to probably do better at is connecting with our community. We need the community to know that we need our community. And so tomorrow, we're going to talk about a public information officer and how we can communicate with and connect with Swain County so that Swain County supports Swain County schools, maybe even like they used to. That's the second part of bringing students to school. Students will come to school when they're excited about coming and when the parents know that it's important. Those are the targets that we have right now. Okay? Now, that's from the district level. This has been provided for our schools and except for pre-K, and I will deliver it to them soon, this week. And then from there, I expect for our schools to jump on board and say, and this is how we're going to implement those things. This is how we're going to use those ideas. Then they, the schools, will come back and say, and we need support, and we will put that into our strategic plan as our action steps. We want to give to them everything we can to help improve instruction and caring for our kids. Okay? Does that make sense? Do you have any questions or any thoughts, anything else that you want us to think about adding to this tonight?
I do have a question.
Okay.
One of the things that we discussed in tomorrow meetings was how to maybe balance that scale a little more with technology and moving away with technology. Has there been more discussion about maybe moving away?
Yes.
And what will that look like? And then not only what will that look like in the school, but how will parents maybe even notice a change? Will it happen this year? So just, do you mind elaborating on that a little bit?
There has been discussion about that, and finding that balance point between how much is enough and how much is too much is going to require some additional work. I think that there is an understanding right now that we are going to move away from the amount of screen time in the classroom that we have been seeking in the past. And I believe that our principals, and you all need to correct me in this if I'm wrong, okay? But our principals have already started to have conversations with the staff about eyeball-to-eyeball instruction and less screen time. Is that true, Lisa? And I know that Mike, Mike Treadway, is all over that because Mike is a strong proponent about teachers teaching and devices not teaching. Is that a fair statement? That's not, that's not why I said that. That's not why I said that.
Well, there's a reason I'm holding it up.
So the answer to your question is, the conversations are being had. Are there necessarily guidelines towards that yet? The answer is no. Okay?
Would now be an okay time to ask about some of the guidelines that the state has given with the new technology. I had a couple of people ask me, and so maybe just clarifying that, that instructional time with cell phones now is...
There is legislation that has passed that strengthens the position of our teachers and our schools to not have communication technology operating during class time. And I had to say it that way intentionally, Lisa, because we still need some technology, and they still will be able to do things like send email.
Right.
Okay? But I think largely the concern is about cell phones or those types of digital devices. And I can tell you that in our schools, there has already, especially at the high school, there has already been a move to minimize that and to support teachers when they say, put them away, put them here. Is that a fair statement, Tyler? Because if you've looked online, there have been multiple posts about that and some responses about that. Now, for everyone who is watching or who is concerned, there is still the opportunity for those digital devices to be used if the teacher permits it.
Right.
All right? But the teacher expectation is going to be, put them away. Is that a fair enough statement?
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's good clarification, I think, for anybody that is curious, so. And do you mind if I ask, Tyler?
Asking.
Will each teacher be handling it the same way? Like, is there a standard, especially at the high school level? This is, this is what they're going to do? They're going to collect them at the door, or they're going to put them on a desk, or is it up to each teacher?
No, we have a set way across the board with everybody. As far as, you know, if a project or something comes up where a cell phone is utilized for that or something they're working on in class and something to be improved through the administration for that to be allowed, but outside of that, from bell rings and class starts, bell rings and class ends, they're hot.
Okay. But they can have them when they're walking from class to class? These are questions I'm getting a lot, sometimes just from kids. So I just want to, I think it's good to just say that out loud.
Kind of, I guess, now for RL, it's true for these young adults.
Yeah.
Just, you know, during lunch, it's non-structural, so on their phone, it's fine. Transition class to class, it's fine. When you walk into class, it's done, put up, and then we have our stuff wrote down and a handbook for consequences for that.
Okay. I think that alone is going to help our face-to-face instruction.
I believe that it will.
Yeah. The distraction will be, yeah.
Yes. Other questions?
You know, we talked about some math teachers asked for textbooks.
Yes.
Did we get textbooks, or can we print off textbooks for them?
Well, math teachers have the opportunity to print off anything that they want to use in the classroom. Right now, our primary curriculum support in math is coming online. Now, we are looking at textbooks as they come to us for math, and we are looking at how we may be able to adopt those. So the answer is, will we be moving towards that? I believe that we will. And if our math teachers or any other teacher wants help and support in being provided some type of a printed tool, we will provide that for them and do everything we can to minimize the amount of time it takes for them to create that. Okay? Did that answer your question?
It did. But, you know, I know one who mentioned that.
Yes.
Textbooks.
And Katrina has already had conversation, I believe, with that individual.
The principal there.
Yes.
I've got, I've got samples in that they can come up and look at. I've got another teacher at the high school that is interested in a textbook. I've been collecting these samples, but we're getting new math standards next year, and so we don't want to do a big adoption and then have wasted our money. So we're trying to fill in the gaps as best we can. We're also doing a math pilot of IATSEL at the high school this fall, which will help them diagnose some deficits so that they can go back track. So we're excited about that. We'll see how that goes.
I believe that you will see, RL, over the next two or three years, move more towards printed material. I think that we're seeing that digital is not always sufficient.
We also bought magic tools that's going to help them create some of that printed material. That's their AI platform, safely create that material so they can print that off.
Any other questions or thoughts? Starting in, is this August? Okay. Starting in September, we will begin to bring to you the strategic NC Star plans for the schools that will come from some of these guidelines as well. All right? All right. That's all that I have about district goals. Next, we have Michelle coming to bring some school nutrition bids.
I'm prepared to request that you approve the bids for... My Chemicals, it's really a quote. I've got Correctional Enterprises is who won it. They beat United Chemicals by about half, and we've been with them for, well, ever since I've been here. I don't know really how long.
Been with United or been with...
Correction Enterprises.
Okay.
Yeah. It's the North Carolina Department of Corrections. And then I've also got my milk products that I need approved, and Pet is who won that. They're the only ones that showed. And they're cheaper than what they've been in the past couple of months, and he said that's because commodity prices have gone down.
How do our chemicals stand relative to last year?
About the same.
Okay.
It's not that big of a deal. And that's really just a quote, but it's always been approved too.
Right. Okay.
It's not a...
Should I have to say it before yours? Does it, the price stays, is price on days safe before yours?
No, they have the option to change it for the chemicals each year. We're allowed to renegotiate that. The milk products is on commodity pricing, and that changes month. But the first bid that they send in, it stands for 90 days, and it's been cheaper than what we've been paying this year, so we'd gladly take that for 90 days.
Any other questions? Michelle? Anything else you want these folks to know?
Thank you.
It was interesting whenever I, you know, I put out a couple of those little 90-second reels in the past couple of weeks to talk about things that are coming up. It was really interesting to me that whenever I said we're going to receive free meals, free breakfast, and free lunch again, that there were responses to that like people didn't know. I mean, there was really excitement about that in those responses. So just so everybody understands, kids don't have to pay for breakfast and lunch. Come and eat, please.
Yeah. Please come and eat.
Please come and eat.
Yep.
Every year, we have to ask for your approval to request a winter weather waiver. And what that means is because we have a certain number of days that we have missed in a calendar year, a school calendar year, within the last, I think it's either the last eight or the last 10 years, they allow us to stop, to start a week early and still be within the law. There are some school systems who started classes today, and they've stepped outside the calendar law. We start with students next Monday and are within the calendar law, but are starting a week earlier than a lot of other systems in the state. Okay? Our waiver request would allow school to start on August the 17th in 2026, which is just a day different from this year. I asked, I don't remember who I asked to put this together, Jessica, just to show you what that would kind of look like without any workdays in it, if you want to adhere to that. And you're not voting on this today. Okay? I don't know what this will look like for '26-'27. There's a lot of other information that needs to go into that, but that's how it would start with this winter waiver weather, winter weather waiver. Okay? So I'm asking that you would approve that so I can send it into DPI. It's due August the 15th. Are there any questions about that? There were several board policies that had to do with diversity, equity, and inclusion that I shared with you a couple of board meetings ago as a first reading, and then we got really busy with a lot of other stuff and didn't finish with the second reading. Do you want to go ahead and approve these tonight as a second reading, or do you want to table this and have an opportunity to look at them in more detail?
Even if you do the second reading, it still is not passed. You still get a chance to look at it, correct?
You can always change board policies. After a second reading, the intent is to vote them in with approval and place them in the policy manual.
After the second reading?
After the second reading. Yes.
I'd like to look at it.
Okay. So you would prefer to table those for now? Okay. So could I ask then that we look at those over the next month, please, and then bring them up for discussion and hopefully vote in September? We really need to get them, get them taken care of. All right? Okay. There is a school prayer assurance that is in your packet. It does not require approval. However, I am required to certify that I have shared it with you, that you've had an opportunity to look it over. This is a federal expectation for the title grants. We've approved this, excuse me, you've approved this every year just exactly in this language so that we can move forward. I don't know if you've had time to look at it, but I really need to get this approved, not approved. I just need to be able to say you've looked at it and understand. Okay? Do you have any questions about it?
It's an annual thing.
It's an annual event, yes. Okay? And Cody? I believe that's all that we have in discussion tonight. Have I missed anything?
Not on the agenda.
Okay. May we move to action items?
Yes, sir.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda, including all of the personnel, the minutes from the June 9th, 2025, meeting, June 2026, or June 26, 2025, and the July 14, 2025, meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, bow your hands. Passage unanimous.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the child nutrition bids for chemicals and milk.
Motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, bow your hands. Passage unanimous.
I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education approve the winter weather waiver for 2026-'27.
Motion. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, bow your hands. Passage unanimous.
Those are all of the action items that I'm aware of. Have I missed anything? Go ahead. All kinds of calendar opportunities. The school year kicks up, and in the morning, if you have time, we bring all of our staff together for about an hour and a half, starting at 8:30 in the Performing Arts Center at the high school. We hand out awards. Tomorrow, we'll be naming the teacher of the year for '26, or '25-'26. And also, after we hand out the awards, Dr. Bill Daggett will be speaking to us about where AI is taking us and what our students are going to be, need to be able to do when they graduate, and how we can make sure that we help them be ready. He is a nationally known future-focused educator, and we are just really privileged to be able to have him tomorrow. So if you can get away, come and spend 90 minutes with him. So if you can get away, come and spend 90 minutes with us in the morning. Okay? Next regular meeting is September the 8th. What time do you want to start?
Mitchell.
What?
I know, we play in Highlands that day. Do you believe you have a game, too?
You can get there in 30 minutes.
I'm just waiting to see what time's your game start at? Five.
Do you want to move that, that meeting to a different day?
She plays at the high school Tuesday, so we're getting four on Tuesday. I predicted this time.
Can you do that, Mitch? Can you do four on Tuesday the 9th?
Tuesday the 12th. Tuesday, we're in Andrews, at home versus Andrews. That's four.
She plays at four.
So I could probably get here by five.
Can I recommend that we get together on September the 11th? That Thursday for our meeting?
I'm Murphy at four.
Same.
Heavenly days, guys, come on. Do you want to go the week before?
It's Labor Day on Monday the week before.
Yeah, my daughter's getting married the weekend before that, too. That's okay, I'll be over it by then.
I set it earlier on Monday night.
You can set the time whenever you want it. There are boards that meet during the day.
Highlands, I don't have a game on Monday.
Yeah. Y'all Andrews the night, or home versus Andrews?
Yes.
Okay.
And we could do, unless we did six o'clock. We'd be done at six, but I don't know if you want to do a little bit like that. We used to do six.
It's listed as a much different time in board policy. I think it's listed at either six or seven o'clock as the regular meeting time. But you can set it whenever you want. If that's what you need to do.
We have to be early.
Can we do it at four?
We can do it, we do it at four?
Be out.
Be out in time for church?
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right.
September 10th.
September 10th, four o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't want you to miss the games. That's important. That's all I have, Cody, for this evening.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand and adjourn. We are adjourned. 4:33.
30 minutes.
Sounds good.